Like to welcome everyone to June 2th Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Go ahead and jump right in and get started on unfinished business. Have a presentation of single bathroom for Rock Creek Park Splash Pad and Pavilion Parking Rec Director Matt.
Thank you, Commissioner Dooley and Commissioners. It's wonderful to see you again. If you will remember, and I'm sure you will, because it was a it was fun. On March the 17th, we've talked to you about the presentation to build a bathroom at the Splash Pad at Rock Creek Park. And I think that we decided at that time that that probably wasn't the best way to spend our tax money right there. And so we said we're going to kind of back up and punt this project and see what we can come up with. Well, in that same timeframe, our good friends at the Rotary Club of Dawson County also heard this and said, this might be something that we can help with. Which, if you already know, and I'm sure you do, the Rotary Club of Dawson County is is quite astonishing, the the support that they give the community through the Recreation Department. And this is just another extension of that. So Brooke is not here. I know Gabe is here and some of their other folks on their board. And Gabe, why don't you come on up because you they may have some specific questions. I met with Gabe and Mr. Brooke Anderson out at the Splash Pad. And we looked at their plans. We looked at what they these they thought that they might could come up with. And the Rotary Club said they want to handle it. They want to tackle this project. So in a long story short, my request today is to give permission to the Rotary Club to proceed with this and to start working with our planning and zoning for the permitting and everything that goes with that. But I would like permission from the board to go ahead and start working with the Rotary Club to get this particular bathroom done at the Splash Pad. And they would incur all expenses for this.
Is this what you call a no brainer?
It is. It is.
I believe it is.
And I can't speak highly enough. And I know Mr. Gaines is on the is with Rotary as well. This Rotary Board is it's just tremendous what they do for us at the park. And Gabe, who brings a ton of it of insight on how to make this thing work and how to put it all together. And we met out there and he came up with some great ideas about how to do this at very minimal cost for them, but it's no cost to the taxpayers. So this is just phenomenal that they would do this. With that, however, I do need to seek permission from the board to move forward and get that thing started.
Ask county attorney question. Since county is not building in a civic group building, can we waive the permit fees? If we vote to waive the permit fees?
Yeah, I think it's still a county project.
Okay.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So sure. I still like to put that motion. If we take it tonight, well, I'd like to put that motion there the way all fees on.
And as he was saying, he is a licensed general contractor.
Contractor. So all permits will go through and I can be qualified. My company is qualifying agent for all proceedings and I'll oversee and manage to ensure that it exceeds whatever planning and zoning.
And what's your position? What?
I'm just a Rotarian with Dawson County.
Now, don't they just Rotarian? They're fabulous.
I'm a Rotarian with Dawson County, but I'm also a general contractor in Dawson County. And we do commercial and residential, so.
But how long will this take?
Probably two to three months. Unfortunately, with material shortages and everything else, it's unfortunate.
Yeah.
It's a game. When me and Brooke met, Ed Wallace would work with us tying into their sewer system. We have a sewer system adjacent right behind where the Splash Pad is at. So they're going to basically bring us sewer to that location. And then from there, we'll proceed with rebuilding the the structure.
I was so excited when I read this. I just have landed. I mean, I just I said, this is fabulous. And the Rotary Club always does such quality projects.
That that is one of the main reasons I wanted to just bring this to you as quickly as we could because everything, I've been here four years. And I've already worked with these these great folks on a couple really big projects. And they are just phenomenal.
Oh, I know.
They have added so much to the Park and Rec Department. And this is just one of those great things that they do for us.
How did y'all get together? Did you go to?
No, ma'am. Brooke called me. Mr. Brooke Anderson gave me a call. Said this is something that they might look into. And then he and I met and then he and I and Mr. Henderson met and put it all on a Dairy Queen napkin and wrote it all up, but I think it would be a really wonderful addition to that Splash Pad area at zero cost to our taxpayers.
Well, this concerned me ever since you brought it up. Because I know it was needed, but it was like one hundred and sixty nine thousand or something. You know, we thought it was excessive.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm so excited about it.
Yeah, we just we did take the the original plans and scale it back quite a bit. I say we, these are very smart people that did this. They scaled it back quite a bit. It is going to be beautiful and it's going to be it's going to be exactly what we want. But it's not going to have a whole lot of the extra frills. I mean, it's a bathroom. It's okay. It's going to go from two two stall areas to one stall with a locking door. So it'll be a single bathroom usage with a with a baby changing station, all that kind of stuff. So it will serve our needs a great deal while scaling it back from the original plan.
Y'all did away with a gold plated toilet seats.
We just left the handles. Just the gold handles.
Well, that was my question. I was wondering if it was going to be roughly the same, but as long as you're as long as y'all are good with building it and you think it works for what you need.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
It's approximately nine by twelve. We're going to scale it back. It's just going to have a single toilet, single lavatory and baby changing station. We'll still be able to exceed our ID requirements for capabilities. And we're also going to probably do a instead of it being a twelve month year use, I'll probably do some kind of downturn shut offs. So from November to March or April during the winter time, we'll probably shut it down just so we don't have to provide heat and whatnot for the chance of freezing.
No, because there would be no really need to keep it going in the winter anyway.
Not as much.
Not sure. And then we're going to make it the aesthetics look very similar to the rest of the park. CMU block walls, the tangerine match, the rest of the structure paint and whatnot. So it'll just look like it's another piece of the of the property.
Okay. And the simpler the better because maybe people won't be able, there won't be as much to tear up if you go in.
Oh, they still will.
You know. You know, Sydney's had terrible times.
CMU block is a lot more expensive, but it's a lot less harder to vandalize for lack of a better word. It's coming with the standard wood structure or something like that. There's more of a chance for people being more destructive.
We have to talk about it because it happens. We know it happens. So.
All right. There any any more questions?
No, this is just wonderful.
Are y'all okay? We can go ahead and move this forward.
Yes, let's move it forward now. Yes. Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
All right. Item number two, presentation of RFI four zero four dash twenty two Professional Services will be Mr. Headley.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, and good afternoon to you. Wish I had something as nice as what Matt just presented to you. Nonetheless, we may save a little bit of money, so that's a good thing, too. So anyway, to to your point, Commissioner, RFI four oh four dash twenty two Professional Services to perform for Dawson County Stormwater Management Program. You may recall back on March the seventeenth, Public Works Director presented a request for additional staff for the MS four Stormwater Management Program. And then on April the seventh, the BOC tabled the item until alternative pricing could be received for a professional services contract. And then on April the fourteenth, Purchasing released a request for information approximately eight hundred and sixty vendors. And one offer was received out of that. The scope of work, without going through a little bit of explanation for each task. Task one was a compliance with Dawson County MPDES stormwater permitting. Task two was the MS four permit annual report. And then task three was the attendance of board meetings. And the scope of work continued on the task for the annual submission submission of the stormwater plan that is required by EPD by December the thirty first of two thousand and twenty two. So the responsibilities of the county is listed here. And then task one, compliance with Dawson County MPDES stormwater permitting. Task one shall begin with the NTP, which is the Notice to Proceed, and end in December the thirty first of two thousand and twenty two. Task two is the MS four permit annual report. Task three, attendance of the board meetings. And then task four was the annual submission. So going moving on to the pricing information, task one was the compliance with Dawson County MPDES stormwater permit. Lump sum was ninety one thousand dollars. Task two was the MS four permit annual report lump sum was eleven thousand. The task three, attendance of board meetings up to a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And then the annual submission of the stormwater management plan was forty seven thousand. The total cost of that was a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. So with that being said, answer any questions you may have. At this time, we're looking to, you know, maybe move on to another alternative. And that is to restructure the request to add a a stormwater person to maybe character recharacterizing that as a stormwater or project manager stormwater manager. So for right now, we're just asking to reject it. And come back to you with another post.
Any questions for Dave or?
The other, the total price for that person that Denise requested, was it around ninety three thousand and something dollars?
That was total with the benefits.
Benefit salary sixty five thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
In this.
But the the way that that job description was for, it was more of in the engineering line with a professional engineer seal. In looking and looking at what the requirements are, we believe we could probably do that with a special project coordinator that has some of the engineering disciplines associated with it that deal more with stormwater, which we believe will be able to market that in a much broader area than than the professional engineer.
Are you going to go back to trying to hire somebody?
Yes, ma'am.
Another person?
It's been on hold right now, as you know. A couple of reasons for that is obviously the new director was coming on board, wanted to wait till they got on board. Also looking at waiting for the pricing to come in on this to see what direction the board wanted to go. And then whether or not we need to recharacterize what it is we're we're looking to do. So that's all is kind of coming together. So that's why we want to bring it back to you with another position. A position will be asked.
So you're you're talking about adding it to the current project manager position that we have open and and maybe making a dual position for that and just kind of restructuring.
Yes, sir.
Both of them to catch.
That's correct.
What we need with one position instead of two. Okay. All right. But there's no need for us to move this forward. I mean, we just let this go. Yeah, this is the next meeting.
That was just for reformation.
Yeah, okay.
The award was supposed to come out of that. That's what the document that was released said.
Right. Information. Okay. Yeah.
We don't need, okay.
We'll bring that back.
Yeah.
Next board meeting.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. If there's no more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item number one, presentation of FY twenty twenty two Legacy Link Contract Addendum Number Two, Senior Services Director, Don Johnson.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is something that I bring to you often every year. We usually go one to two or three attendants per year. I think Billy and I continue, Chairman Thurman and I continue to laugh at this because this would be one that's not as much, but we will take all we can get. It's four hundred and thirty one dollars that will come through state funding and it will provide us extra meals. And there's no county match to this. So it is a small amount, but it will provide us some extra meals to our clients and it will save the taxpayers some money that we wouldn't have to take out of any of our other accounts. And I would like to go ahead and move this forward because we close out on our grants the end of the month, then it would help with accounting purposes if we could do that.
Is there any questions? How many are we feeding now, though?
We have really, really gone up. We have we're feeding about on Mondays, we take out about thirty five to forty frozen meals in additional to about eighty five. So about a hundred and thirty to forty meals daily for home delivered meals. And then we have anywhere from twenty to thirty five at the center daily, depending on what we have going on. So our numbers have definitely gone up. You know, of course, we lost one last week. We might gain two this week. So we've really been able, just a little update. We've really been able to spend some recent CARES Act funding that had nothing to do with what we would have got through the state. We got it through Legacy Link. It was approximately thirteen thousand that the board approved. We're trying to spend that by the end of the month also. And two of my employees, just before I got here, they had came back from the grocery store. And we were able to provide a list to six clients and have them to mark off things from the grocery store that they would like to have. That's things that they normally probably would not buy. And we picked out the sticks based on myself meeting with our drivers that know our clients and know people and what they might need and know that they're not going to go out and purchase those items. So those employees went in to pick up, they were number five groceries and they were able to spend two hundred and something dollars. And my driver will go out in the morning to deliver those groceries. And it's astonishing things. I mean, the big topic this week at the senior center has been eggs. And I know some of you guys might not look at the price of eggs unless you go do your shopping, but I remember two years ago when eggs was eighty nine cents for a twelve eggs. And that's been the topic this week. I mean, you got to where some of my seniors can't afford eggs. I mean, they've gone up so much. They're like three dollars a dozen, I believe. So eggs and sausage and bacon. You know, I have a lot of people that's not going to purchase bacon. So we were able to get that from federal funding from the CARES Act and we're providing six six homes and and several of those are couples in those homes with some much needed groceries. We have also provided them, we're ordering now with a first aid kit for all the homes, one per home. We have done heaters. They don't need them now, but they might in the wintertime as well as a box fan. So we have put this money to really, really good use with suggestions from our senior clients. And it's really, really worked out well. So we hope to have it all spent by the end of the month because we don't want to lose any money.
No. Just basic.
I mean, thank y'all.
Yeah, it's just.
I feed a lot.
No.
Yeah, just basically, we have also been able to give them some adaptive technology assistance, which can openers that are battery operated. There's also, we had someone from Legacy Link to come and speak to our group and brought in all kinds of adapted technology that even at my age, I could probably use. It's a thing that there's a thing that you sit down. It's a round swivel in your chair that you're able to move around and get up. Especially a lot to get up from the down in room table. Just the can openers, the grippers to open the jars with. And it's not those little things. It's it's actually a device that you can open anything from a two liter Coke bottle all the way up to a spaghetti jar. So we've just been able to provide them with all sorts of things. So we spoiled them over the last couple of months. So when this funding runs out, we're like, okay. Then what will we do? But we're very fortunate.
Just enjoy it while it lasts. That's what you have to do. What what is the cost of a meal?
It's like, I think it's like four dollars and forty five cents now. Is that what we're paying? Our distributor out of there now around Alto, I believe, Lua. So it's about.
I didn't realize it was that much.
Yeah. And that that doesn't count the cost, the management cost to deliver that meal and to provide that meal at our center.
All right. Are y'all okay with moving this forward?
Thank you for what y'all do. Listen, we may be old, but we still need to eat. And we get cold and we get hot, you know, just like normal people. So that is, I mean, is you take, you don't think about having a fan, you know, just turn it, you don't think anything about it.
You don't think about, when I get home, I cut that air conditioner down to seventy and a lot of people, we've got some people that still do not have an air conditioner. They may have a wind it unit, but I don't want to cut it on.
I know. Well, let Christie say that spinning around. But but thank you for the simple thing. Simple things are sometimes real big things, you know. So.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, presentation of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Dawsonville and Dawson County concerning the distribution of local option sales tax and a resolution approving a lost agreement with the city of Dawsonville, county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Bush Chairman. You have in your packets a document that has been distributed. I know that I think sometime last week proposed edit was circulated for y'all to look at. I don't know if there's been any feedback on that, but it does relate to a specific provision in the agreement related to contribution towards acquisition of an ambulance. I don't know if there's any conversation about that, but that proposed edit hasn't yet gone back to the city side. I know their next meeting is scheduled for June sixth, I believe. That's when they'll be taking it up. So to the extent we can get this finalized and back over to them in advance of that, we might can proceed with a finalized document and start getting it processed.
Do y'all have any questions about, I think we've all looked at the the agreement. Do y'all have any questions about it for the ambulance or?
Well, I know it, the figure I had heard about ambulance, it was four hundred thousand. So so it has gone up to five hundred thousand. Are they agreeing to, city agreeing to that? Or we just threw it in there and see if they're going to agree?
I think they're agreeable to contribute up to four hundred thousand.
But we put five hundred.
That's with equipment everywhere, right, chief?
Well, I thought it was even more than five hundred thousand. I thought it was like three seventy three plus one ninety eight.
So what the what my understanding is, in working with county attorneys, Mr. Headley and the chairman, is that the city and the county were going to agree to the two med units that should arrive sometime in the next thirty to forty five days. So those med units were approved back in two thousand and twenty one at a lower cost. So the cost for the individual med unit was two hundred and seventy three thousand eight hundred and thirty nine dollars for the unit. And the equipment was ninety nine thousand one hundred and eighty eight. So if you add those two together, you come to that total of three seventy three zero twenty seven. So I think there was a lot of throwing around of the number of four hundred and five hundred.
Yeah.
I think a lot of that had to do with some discussion as were they going to pay for one of the med units coming in now? Or are they going to pay for one of the med units that's coming in in two thousand and twenty four? Obviously, a year later, when I brought to this board back in February, that price for the single unit med unit had already increased some sixty five thousand along with cost increase on the equipment side. So I think that was where we were trying to firm up. Are they buying one of the first two that's coming in? Are they buying one of the second two? Because that's where the big price difference was. And I think we finally agreed that they were going to purchase one of the ones that's coming in, but pay up to four hundred thousand. And I spoke to Mr. Headley, spoke to Ms. Davis with Gerard and Davis. I said, we won't know the the equipment is probably the hardest thing right now for a vendor to firm up just because it's such a moving target coming in. So with that, we feel comfortable that there'll be about twenty something thousand left over when the final price comes in. And all that we've asked for is that money just be, if it's an agreement from the city and the county for the fire department, then whatever's an overage, instead of it going back into fund balance, just be set aside specific for the fire department to be used for other purchases there at Station One. So that way it would kind of make the agreement whole. Because that's my understanding is what we're talking about.
Yeah. So the way that the the way that the edit that was circulated last week to internally fixes it at a flat four hundred thousand dollar contribution as opposed to some reference to up to four hundred thousand dollars. It fixes it at four hundred thousand dollars. Such that to the extent it is applied to a already acquired and ordered ambulance. Let's say hypothetically, that total value as outfitted is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You would still have that twenty thousand dollars to apply to a similar or future purchase that the that the fire department's already got on order anyway.
So then we just need it needs to be changed in this, what we have before us then, right? Because it says five hundred thousand.
Well, that's the original version that's in the packet for the work session discussion, but you do have the edit that was circulated. To the extent we get some final confirmation on that edit, we'll we'll amend the document and then circulate that back to the city for their review. And and if it's ready to go in final form, then
okay.
It'll be ready to go.
All right. Are there any more questions? So are y'all okay with moving this forward? So do you need a vote from us to?
I think so, since we can get ahead of that June sixth meeting that the that the city has coming up.
Okay.
I think that would be a very good thing to do.
All right. So if y'all are okay, we'll move this forward to tonight's agenda as well. Thank you. Item number three, County Manager's report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Dooley. Just a couple, uh, small items. You may recall Herman had mentioned to you about the rollout of the Office three sixty-five and the dot gov email addresses. Uh, so we'll be sending, uh, out more information soon to let the county employees know what to expect. And then when it is their turn to upgrade. So that'll be coming up and you'll be informed on that as well. Our finance department, once again, uh, has received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budgeting. So congrats to Vicky and her team for that. Wanted to, make you aware of that. That concludes my report. Any questions?
You have something, Tim, you just want me to talk about? I just wanted to talk to the county manager and see if he could work on something for us. I know the sheriff's here and, uh, some of his staff. But I'd love to see, and I thought the Commissioner Bailey would sit on there with me. If you could get in touch with the school board, uh, also with the sheriffs and his staff. And let's discuss, uh, resource officers at school. I'd love to see, uh, us work with the, with Sheriff Foreman and, and the school board and to get at least two officers per school. I think total now we got sheriff, we got seven, county supervisor, seven, eight. But I'd love to see us sit down and talk with the school board and, uh, I know they hadn't been negotiating in a while, has it? Yeah. And, uh, let's get those guys and girls on staff and, uh, protect our kids too. All right. Item number four, County Attorney Report.
Nothing to report from the County Attorney's Office. And as far as I know, there's no reason for executive session tonight.
Okay. Well, that concludes our work session. Uh, we'll be back in about ten minutes to go into the, the voting session. Thanks.